Okay, we call the meeting to order. Would everyone please stand, face our flag?
....................................
Welcome, everyone. This was gonna be one of those meetings that would've been our shortest one of the year maybe. But, things have occurred and we're gonna add a couple of things to the agenda. I will start with, under new business, if you put number four, LOA, Limp of Absence. You'll turn that over to Beth in that time. And number five, superintendent search, update. Anything else, course?
No, just those two. I don't see any.
Okay. I would look for a motion to approve the agenda with amendment.
I like the motion to approve the amendment.
Motion by Katie.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's carried. Schedule presenters, we have none. Public input. Does anyone wish to speak to the district about things concerning our school district? Moving along. Consideration to approve the finance report. Mr. Davis?
Yep. Two different things here this time. The cash flow sheet that you normally see each month, and then it's just good practice to occasionally go through where we're at, budget landmarks. So, that'll be the second page to go through. First one, cash flow. Nothing real, so anything other than to point out towards the end of May and the beginning of June, we have some sizable receipts that come in. Just a note, county taxes for Bootywood Dakota County, it'd be the first half of our property tax. As you know, most of our funding is either state from the idea or county through a levy. So, levy payments come in at the end of May, beginning of June. There'll be a reduction in our ideas, it all balances out, but you'll start to see the first half of our levy come in. And then also, the deal is part of the Inverergy company coming into the school district. We receive a payment structure for 20 years from Inverergy itself, and then there's also small payment, not small payment, it's about a hundred thousand dollars from the city as part of the Inverergy as well. So, those are into our cash flow. So, you'll see there is buildup of our cash towards the end of the fiscal year in June. And remember, you know, cash flow and fund balance aren't quite the same. What we're end up doing here is building up our debt service again, so that when it comes time to pay our debt service, we have our funds available. The important thing to note is that there's no need for us to do any anticipation borrowing. So while, you know, you look at our general fund balance and we talk about being at six or eight percent, cash flow wise, we're okay. So, if there are any questions on that part, I can take those now before we hit on to some you don't see all the time when we do our reports. If there's a question, I can take those.
How many years left on the Inverergy?
So, we're sitting at about eight.
Eight left?
Yeah, we have 20 years, well, the agreement, yep. We've received about 12 years' payments of this now.
So, have we done any discussion as to what happens when those payments, they stop?
So, we've made about $300,000 a year that we get from Inverergy. Currently, we're structured to pay on the elementary roof lease, it's called a lease, when we're not gonna come back and repossess our little roof, but that's how it's structured. But it's about $139,000 that goes to that annually. They fall off, it's about the same time as your video falls off. So, really what we're having to look at, general fund wise, is what we do with the $140,000 essentially. And that'll be on behalf of what the plan after Philly or finance committee level, yep.
Other questions?
So, the next part, and we like to do this, is kinda hit some landmarks, so you kinda see where we're at. Last month, we approved the revised budget for fiscal year 19. You'll see the fiscal year 19 budget one more time at the end of June, as we approve the final 19 budget. But here, all you'll see is year-to-date expenditures and revenues, and we do it through the end of February, 'cause we have everything kinda locked into our books by the end of February. If we do it in the middle of the month, we have part of payroll, not quite all receipts and whatnot. So, when you look at the end of February, we're looking at eight out of 12 months, you figure roughly about 66%. The reason why in a school that may not exactly hit is a large part of what we do, 75%, what we do is payroll. And a large part of our payroll is the teaching staff. And while the payments are so structured to get paid in July 15th, July 30th, August 15th, those payments are actually in the previous fiscal year. So, the real payments start to hit August 30th, so we won't hit exactly 66%, but it's kinda good to look at landmarks. Where I really wanna tie out is the first number on the top, general fund, but those are revenues, about 56%. What you'll see is in May with the tax payments, a lot of our referendum levy money comes in, and that'll help boost that forward. As well as, if you look at the bottom line with the expenditures and general fund, we have about 60% payroll and payroll benefits will start hitting as we close in all those payments from next fiscal year, July 15th, July 30th, August 15th. That all gets put back into fiscal year 19, so that'll boost back up the expenditure part. But just good things to tie out. You'll see in the expenditure part, the debt service, we're at 100%. That's because our debt service payments for the fiscal year are already paid. Most of those payments are in February. There's one small one that's not on the February, that same time, it's in December, but all our debt service payments are at 100%. But you'll see again, with our levy, we're seeing revenues, our debt service revenue on the top there, we're at 52%. That will close out as we receive that levy payment in May-June. The other funds are just kinda good to see if we're way out of line. You'll see food service revenue, that's about 55%, food service expenditure, 154, pretty much in line. Same with community ed, 70% revenue, 65% expenditure. Again, a lot of that was payroll, now it's preschool, teaching staff is in community ed, so that'll catch up as we put those funds back into the fiscal year. Trusted Agency, that's scholarship, so the expenditures, that's set, our payments are gonna be going in December and in August, so that fiscal year party is done. Whereas the revenue will still have some funds coming in from our trusted agency as this calendar year closes out, or yeah, sorry, fiscal year closes out. Let's just have a good landmark to see where we're at fiscally, where our budgets go, and to make sure we're not way out of line in either revenue or expenditure area. So, if you have any questions on that, I can do my best to answer that as well.
Anything for Josh?
This was one of the recommendations, you know, when others came in and talked about doing those quarterly updates. So, I think it is good, instead of doing it just once a year, to kind of have these snippets. It allows you to ask questions along the way and understand how the whole process works a little better. I think it was a good recommendation.
We'd look for a motion to approve in due time. Motion by Bill. Seconded is by Mike. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion. In event a board member wants to discuss any one item, it can be removed from the consent agenda for further action. If you haven't had a chance to review, just take a minute to review. I will be abstaining from this vote, because under personnel items, there's one Jared Miller, who's gonna assist the seventh grade baseball coach. That would be me, and so I have to abstain.
I would just like to publicly thank LA Val Rotary on many different donations they've done throughout the year, and then Merch and Span. They've made some donations to the school. And if you, I'm sure Emma will update us maybe on robotics, but they've just huge success at Duluth and in Iowa, so we're very, very grateful for their donations. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agendas.
Motion by Katie. Seconded by Bill. Other discussion?
I would just like to publicly thank Heidi Zimmerman. She was our cheerleading coach for 10 years, donated a lot of time and energy and her own money to that program. It was kind of dying at one time, and she brought it back, and so we're very thankful for her, for her service.
We propose in the second, all in favor, approve the consent agenda as shown, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain, Bob? That is carried. Emma? I left you off the agenda.
That's okay.
No, it isn't, okay.
Okay, well, I have a couple things. I thought I'd start with sports. On Thursday, the track team goes to their first track meet at RCTC, which will be indoors, so that's kinda nice for them. Baseball, softball, and golf are all practicing right now, and they'll have their first games and meets in the next couple weeks. Over the weekend, the speech team got first at Cambridge Isanti, and then on Thursday night, they're gonna have Community Night. So, at seven o'clock on Thursday, people can come to the IMC and watch all the speakers, which I know a lot of people like to come out and support the team. And yeah, it's pretty fun. And then we have subsections this Saturday. The robotics team this weekend got the gracious professionalism award at Cedar Falls, Iowa, which is really a nice recognition for all those people in robotics, 'cause it goes to show that they're very gracious and help the other teams out, and that their work was recognized, which is really great for them, 'cause I know they put a lot of hours in to build the robot. Band and choir, this past weekend, were in Chicago on a trip, and what I've heard, I've heard all good things. I know they got to go see Mamma Mia, which a lot of people really enjoyed, and take lots of fun pictures in the park down there and things like that. The spring play is Alice in Wonderland. It's the first or second weekend in May, and we have a lot of students participating in that that are pretty excited about it. And then, next Tuesday, April 2nd, all of the juniors will be taking the ACT, so that's what I have for everybody.
Including you.
Yeah, I'll be taking it, so.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Thank you, Emma. New business. Consideration to approve a resignation at the close of the 18-19 school year.
Yeah, you know, usually resignations are on the consent agenda. I asked to have this one special put on here. It's a retirement, it's someone that doesn't qualify for retirement, but it's Lori Turner. And if all of you that know her, she's remarkable, and I see some sad faces already. She's only been in the classroom for 13 years, but subbed for us for five years above that. And she did that so she could raise her kids and was always a part of our building. For me, she's been here my entire time. I mean, she's always been part of the bomber family, so I didn't think it was fair to just put her down as a resignation. I really think we need to honor it. This is her retirement, and so it would be my recommendation sadly to accept. So she can go move up to Bemidji and have wonderful time on the lake and enjoy retirement, but nonetheless, she's done some great things for Cannon Falls.
Motion by Brenda to approve. Second. Seconded by Mike. Other discussion? On behalf of the board, you send our regrets, please.
I will.
All in favor of resignation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Consideration to post and hire 1.0 elementary teaching position.
Right, this one has not been posted internally. The other one that we talked about the last time is still bumping around. I try to copy you in on those, so you can kinda try to follow the jigsaw of where everything lands. We leave those open for the week, and then someone takes it, and then the next one's open. Tomorrow, I'd like to go ahead and post a third grade position internally. There might be some more movement with that, and then we'll just continue to follow the contract process. It's my recommendation to post for this position.
I'll make a motion to post.
Okay.
Katie on the motion, Brenda on the second. Other discussion? All in favor of posting hires, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next up, number three, facilities discussion. We met last week, I'm the facilities alternate, so I was there. Mike is our primary person. We had a number of topics there, and good conversation. Mike, I'm gonna let you take it from there.
Sure. I see Dave's here too, so if I screw up, I got everything. Yeah, we had a good turnout. First thing we did was, Dave took us into the field house, where we talked about storage situations. If anybody's been in a field house lately, there's a lot of stuff in there. A lot of the track mats are in there. And so, we kinda decided that we're, that storage is a premium around here now. And so, short term, I think somebody's gonna go in, the field house has those corner storage units, so I think we're gonna go in and rearrange some things, try to get everything to fit. Long term, we've talked about the construction of a storage facility outside, closer to the football field. The construction class was talked about as a possible way for doing that. So that's more of long term. One of the things we also talked about is developing some sort of protocol for, like, equipment donations. So, for example, one of the reasons that the field house is so cluttered right now is that the mat rats got a bunch of wrestling mats, and they delivered them without the knowledge of custodial staff. So all of a sudden, they're just there, which clutters everything up. And I realize there was an exercise bike that just showed up one day. So, I think we need to, we need to get some sort of protocol, some sort of way that we can control what it is that's coming into the building. So that's kind of a long-term goal. We had a nice, long discussion about the football field in the back. There's some discrepancy as to whether or not we could use it this year, but regardless, it's hard as a rock. There's no irrigation back there, the irrigation got cut off a number of years ago. So, eventually, it's gonna need some major work. What we talked about for another short term is to use some of the ample space that we have in front of the school as a way of... One of the first things we talked about was building like a practice field out there. Doing some dirt work, moving some dirt around, and getting a field there that's playable. If the backfield can't be used this year, then football team would probably use that as a practice facility. Once they're done with it, then it opens it up to FIAD classes, and it opens it up to soccer, and it opens it up to youth athletics. So that's our short-term goal. Now, long term, we talked about having, we'd like to host a community forum to see, to get public input on what we want for our long-term athletic facilities to be. The driving force behind this is that people, some people like to see football in the back of the school, move it from John Birch Park to the school. How do you accomplish that? You can't really do it on the field that's there now. It's crowned wrong, it's all bad. Artificial turf was mentioned. Of course, with that comes a pretty hefty price tag. $1.2 million was bandied about once or twice. How do you accomplish that? We don't know. So I think the facilities commission, we're gonna set up a community meeting in the auditorium sometime, in the not, hopefully not too distant future. Seems to, according to one of the people that was there, this is something that's been talked about for almost five years now. And I mean, it's either we're gonna do something or we're not. Let's quit kicking it down the road. Let's figure out what we're gonna do there. So hopefully, I can work with Dave or the football, whatever, who wants to do it, we could set something up in the auditorium, if that's okay with this group, to get, just kind of see what the community feels. I mean, maybe we'll get 100 people in there, 98 of them say, "You're crazy to do anything back there." Then, maybe 98% say, "Yeah, we gotta get football to high school," I don't know. So, with "you're okay," we'd like to set that up and go on. I don't know if that has to be, actually, I never, not probably. I think it does.
Okay. Just expanding on the space issue we have in the field house. We have a lot of help with our athletics in this town, from mat rats to J.O. volleyball. But sometimes, equipment and things are brought in that we can't account for in other places from those groups. So, it does create more of an issue of storage than anything else. So, on one hand, we welcome them to assist us, and on the other hand, when they bring in things that we can't account for, we can't put away anywhere. It creates this burgeoning issue with equipment and no place to put it. So, we talked real loosely about, maybe we put some type of storage facility, what I would say would be center field of Hawks Field in that little area back there. Just something that would help us out for the amount of equipment that we have, and be able to move some things and be much more orderly with it. Certainly, if you've seen that, the track, I'm not sure how the track people can maneuver around there, but they get it done. So, really, it's more about us constantly adding equipment from our friends, if you will, extracurricular friends, and not having anything to do with it, and not having any place for it. So, it has created a problem for us.
I think another take on that is something that we'll discuss right now, is at the elementary school, we're looking at some safety additions at the elementary school. And so, the goal is to control access to that school. And so, the hope was that we would take, as you enter the school, the elementary school, you've got the preschool hallway to the right, that some steel doors would be put, would be put there. The district office door would slide over a little bit, and then a three-quarter wall would go across, so from the old office over to the north wall. So what you would do is, you'd create a vestibule there that would funnel all access through the, through the office, school office. Am I right?
Yeah, exactly. You're just gonna expand the vestibule area right up to the current door where it is right now. The current door where it is right now would be on the inside of the building, on the outside of the vestibule. You create a second entrance where the block windows are. That'd be your primary main entrance into the office. Block windows were cool 25 years ago, but I wouldn't mind taking those out and putting a door there. And then, you would have those double fire doors, which I found out through working with some of the architects originally, it was actually designed to have those originally. They were in the original plans to go there. So doing it again, I mean, it's very easy to do. So you would completely control the flow of the traffic coming into the building, right to the main office. That's the only place you could go. The cafeteria doors, the only door to the left as you come in, and that's fobbed. So that's closed all day, has fob access. So, it's an alternate idea that I've worked with Jennifer and some of the staff over there compared to moving the entire office. And what we were looking at primarily was a permanent solution. The last thing that we wanted to do was another temporary deal to get us by for a couple of years. And I think, I mean, I don't know, maybe you can give me your thoughts, Jennifer, but I think it's a permanent solution. I think it'll look good, and I think it'll function the way that we need it to, without moving that office, keeping the classroom space, just like it is.
So how would the parents get in for preschool?
Preschool, they, everyone can come in through the office, because once you go through that first set of doors...
Yeah.
Right on the other set, if you go right immediately, we're gonna put another door going back into the high school, or back into that hallway.
Okay, okay.
So you would have access that way, and then if you're going towards the gym or the IMC area, that original door is still accessible to go that way.
Gotcha, okay. That makes sense. It's just hard to picture.
It really is, yeah. We had maps in our meeting, though.
Yes.
When you look at it, you can see it, and go, "Gosh, that really makes sense."
Yeah, no, I like, I like the idea.
So...
Things that we're talking about tonight are costing us money.
Yep, that's not actually ahead of me yet, is it?
No.
No, it hasn't cost us a thing.
You know, the conversation on this would have to be that that school is built pre-student, I don't know what the right word is, pre-student issues on a national level.
A lot of safety issues that have come up since that school.
And we really, at the time we built it, it was kind of a wow situation. We welcomed people to come in, and we still welcome people to come in. But, we have to keep one eye on the safety issues that have presented themselves over the last 15 years. And that is not a cheap alternative, but they've been working real hard to make it inexpensive as possible. So, we really need the community to know this is more about the safety of our students and our educators.
Well, keep in mind, you know, the lottery, like we like to call it in this last one. Everyone applied for the safety grants. Well, it was random, we all know it was, because there were districts that had seven elementaries, and one got picked, and it was the best of all three. It had been upgraded the most, so it was very obvious that it was a lottery system. And if you are listening to any of the legislative things that are going on right now, they're like, "This isn't fair. My school needed this, and such-and-such school is brand-new, it has state-of-the-art, you know, safety equipment." They wouldn't even let you move the grant within your district. It had to be that, you know, school.
Sure.
And so, keep that in mind, that these are all really great ideas, and those would fall really in line with that. I foresee something coming forward, because how do you tell one school they get it and another school they don't? If it's not this year, it'll be the following, so keep that in mind, that'll be, 'cause you have to have a purpose for that money. You can't just throw it in to find one, so.
Okay. Moving on, this one, I don't think will cost us any money, but it might be the one you hear the most phone calls over. We talked about walkers in the school, and one of the things that the custodial staff has found is that we've got walkers that will come down into the academic hallways and come around and do this great big loop, and it kinda interferes with the job that they're trying to do down there when they clean. They're not supervisors, they shouldn't necessarily have to supervise people that are walking. So we made the decision at the meeting that we're going to, we're gonna shut off those hallways. So, there'll be no walking down here, and down, and around, and back. You still get the loop from the field house through, you know, the atrium, the cafeteria around, that way, there's still plenty of room to walk. So we're gonna, we're gonna cut those out that really led us into a bigger discussion about overall safety of the field house area. We've got people that come in and walk and don't necessarily check in at the office. You've got some people that check in at the office and then go walk. So, I guess my feeling is here, we're talking about cutting, you know, not cutting off, but adding security features to the elementary school. We have doors here where people can just freely come in and out. So that's gonna be, I think, the walking part of it was the short term. I think we're gonna have to have some long-term discussions about access to the hallways for the public and for walking. And the tough part is that field house was sold with the idea of really 24/7 access at the time it was sold, and that's just proving to be unworkable, but...
But are people walking the hallways during the school day?
No.
It's optional.
Not during the day.
Attempts are made.
Attempts are made.
Yeah, they try.
I've never, I've never seen one, but it must be, okay.
Yeah, that's...
If FIAD's in there, which is a lot, then they wanna go elsewhere.
Sure, which, yeah.
I think the ultimate goal here, as we're talking about safety, is trying to come to an even ground between the two buildings. We have Fort Knox over there, we have a lot more different activities at this location. And, you know, for my staff to be able to get their work done, it's a true challenge. It's not, and I just wanna make this clear, it's not just the walkers, it's the fact that the doors are now open. So, pass go the walkers, who are all wonderful, I might add, wanna throw that out there, but it opens up the whole building. Pretty soon, there's students, there's, and everyone's unsupervised, it's a ripple effect. More and more people start going through. Meanwhile, we're trying to get hallways done, rooms done, scrubbers, dust mops, that kind of stuff. So if we just do that one part of the building only, beginning of the evening, my staff will focus on that, and then as things wind down towards the end of the evening, they'll go into the areas that have been open all night.
So you're saying that you can still have the loop from, like, the field house, that loop through, like, by the choir rooms?
Yep, field house, all the way through the atrium, past the cafeteria...
Cafeteria, and like by the office, and then back?
Industrial tech, all the way past art, all the way past band. It's over 1,000 feet, I remember that.
Still a pretty big loop.
Plenty of room.
Four laps would be a mile.
Okay.
Without going into the field house.
Right.
So if you added the field house also, and if you could walk that loop, it's a significant area. I mean, it's a lot of walking area, so...
So you're basically just cutting off the...
That's all we're doing.
'Cause that's where the students are gonna wanna go anyway, if they forget something in their locker, or they, you know, if you don't want them in there, which I can get totally.
Yeah. It's all possible.
Yes, yes. No, I can, I can understand, especially when you're trying to clean it.
Yeah. All right, so that's the gist of our meeting. If anybody have any questions?
The last thing that we talked about that we need to bring up, because it's that issue that keeps coming back to us as a senior center. And the committee unanimous in supporting the community center and agrees to do what we can to support them at the CCC. More discussions are currently in the work with the district, the city, and the senior center. So, we need to continue to reinforce that we want them there. We want them as a partner with the district, and we're just gonna have to decide at what cost, because certainly, it costs us money to keep that open. Conversely, it's a good thing to keep it open, because it remains used, and that's exactly what we wanna do, so... So it is kind of a quandary for us that we'll have to continue to discuss between now and whatever time that we gave them, first of July, did we say? Something like that. So we just need to continue to reinforce that we wanna be partners with them. We've just gotta work this out, because we can't continue to lose the kind of money without at least some conversation on it. It's, it's a good thing for us to do.
Mike, finish the discussion item. Anybody have anything from Mike? We'll continue to work on this.
I have a question. So the contract was approved that we talked about last time for the January three-
They did not sign it.
No.
They met, Teresa had kind of an urgent meeting that she had to go to in, in Texas, I believe it was. She plans to come and meet with you guys next time, I think that'll be really nice, for us to all talk in the same room, because I'm meeting with the city and she's meeting with the city and all of that, it would be nice to have her here. So she's excited to meet with you on, on April eighth. They were unable to come to conclusion if they were able to afford the two fifty a month, and so the contract is still not signed. But we'll, we'll know shortly, we'll know soon.
I had a question from Mike. As far as the building, construction down at the elementary, has there been any price paid that's been thrown around?
Yeah, it was a hundred seventy thousand, somewhere in that range, I think.
Hundred, about around a hundred and fifty thousand, just the construction of the doors and the walls themselves, the bid that I, that came in was around seventy-one thousand. You have all the bells and whistles to add after that, with door access, hardware, wiring, that kind of stuff. So I, I put it at about a hundred and fifty thousand or under to get the complete job done, beginning to end, compared to moving it, which came in at a little over eight hundred thousand.
Yeah, eight hundred, just shy of eight hundred.
So it, big, big difference for a, a possible permanent solution, so.
And with the, do you have a timeline that you're interested in looking at?
I, obviously, the purpose of it and what it does, it would sooner, the sooner it can get done, the better for that building, but funding is the problem, so I don't have a timeline.
It is not built in next year's budget. If we were to do that, we would need to move some things around. It's not built in for next year. But we did that similar to the truck, we started talking about it now-
Yep.
Getting those plans in line, you know, seeking other bids, all of those things, and then we're able to do it the following spring. That might not be the worst thing in the world either, so you can really see what it would look, yeah.
Wow. Wouldn't it be ideal to actually do it during the summer, when they don't have students?
We always have students there, so regardless, but yes, that would be a better time to do it, absolutely. We have Cannon Kids, we have Bomber Academy, we have the summer food program, the building's very busy in the summer, but it's isolated enough to that entryway, we have enough other accesses to be able to close it off and get that job done. And I expect it to be a relatively quick process. Nothing's structural, it, you know, so, I mean, everything would go in pretty, pretty quickly, and, yeah, that'd be ideal, it really would, to be able to get it done in the summer.
Moving on, number four, leave of absence.
You do have one, it was one of them that were added, I handed out a letter because you didn't get it ahead of time. This is for Carissa Jemmy. She, if you remember correctly, was on mobility leave. We asked her to come back and help us out with the GCD position that was open. It's through the CESE grant, she was a behavior interventionalist for point six time. Very, very thankful that she was able to come in, and I know Jennifer agrees with me, did just an absolutely great job. This year we're gonna reopen that position as a one-point-oh. The grant is for a full-time position, and we feel like if we could have someone here five days instead of three, you know, and she agrees, that position, she said it is just a lot for those three days. So GCD will be, you won't have to hire this position, this will be hired through GCD, but it would be my recommendation to allow her to have this one-year leave, so that she can keep working with the things that she's been doing on her mobility leave, and allow us to get the position back to a full-time one-point-oh. So this is pretty standard, you get to see the letter, the statute's all there. She will let us know by February first of the following year if she's coming back, or, you know, continuing with her leave or something like that.
So she makes reference to the statute, which, and then she also mentions February first, is that also part of the statute?
You know-
That's a requirement.
It is, especially people on leaves, we wanna make sure they let us know by February one, it's a little different than other things like March one for some of the other non-renewals or things like that.
Who would be following up, making sure that's-
Lori and I do. We have, we have a list of people, but, yeah. We, we stay pretty close on that. And we are very lucky, Diane and Brian in both the buildings are building reps, as far as the union goes, they do a really nice job of keeping tabs on it, too. Nobody wants to miss that date.
So I would love for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Katie. Second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Other discussion, once again, we're following statute.
Oh, absolutely. This is very contractual.
Okay? Anything else? All in favor of the leave of absence, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie.
Superintendent search, I can only assume with the number that of the advisory group that's in the audience tonight, that's of interest to them. Mark Grossklaus was our, was our chosen number-one candidate, the principal from Albert League. We began negotiations with him, Bill and I met with him once for a lunch date, just to feel one another out, just to make sure that we were compatible with one another. That worked out extremely well. A week ago tonight, Mark and I met one more time to see what, what issues that he might have, what concerns might be there. He was absolutely committed to Cannon Falls. This, this contract is gonna work, we'll make it work. So he was effusive in his praise of Cannon Falls, of how they dealt with him when he was here, of the follow-ups, he was just very, very excited to come. We did have a setback, and that was with health benefits. We had forwarded the contracts of, the synopsis of HBL contracts. One thing we wanna do is we, we don't wanna stick out. We wanna be the same as our peers in our conference, we're the same size as many of them. So we wanna continue to keep the integrity of our contract and still hire the best person available. So the benefits seem to be a stickler, I think he had some correspondence with Lori about the benefits and about the health package. We sent him our, our information. Just so you know, that there's a, a push coming on to, to begin capping health benefits for staff, and in particular administration, there are times when that, that amount can be astronomically high. So there's choices that a superintendent would make as to what kind of contract that he'd like, as far as what type of plan there is available. So reviewing those, his counterproposal to us at that time was for full health benefit. But we're trying to get away from that, both as a school and even as a state with the administration, because what's going on with health insurance has not ceased in the twenty years plus that I've been here, it keeps growing. So that seems to be an impasse, but I did not think in any of my conversations that it was going to be a deal breaker. So I contacted him last night just via text, did you get our health information? He says yes, received, which was a little bit different than the conversations I've had with him in the past, when he was bubbly, what can we do, kind of thing. So I could tell the tone changed. This morning, he gave me a call at about eight-thirty in the morning and says I'm declining the offer. Real brief discussion with him about it, I requested that he think about it for the day. I'm not sure when he started thinking about it in the first place, but I thought maybe it was in our best interest and his, just to step back and see if he'd feel any different after mulling it over. He declined. I then asked him for the, to give us something in writing, so that we know for sure this is his intent. So earlier this afternoon, via email, I think you've all got something, that his intention was indeed to not take this job. Getting into our process, I think the staff felt good, we all felt good about what process that brought us to Mark. And that last, that last evening when we had all that conversation, and quite animated at times, we narrowed these choices down to two. We were very strong on both of these candidates, and both of them seemed to outdistance themselves from the third candidate we interviewed that night. So here we sat after all that conversation, Mark Grossklaus will not be our superintendent, he's declined that. So board, now we have to decide what's on the table for us to do next. And I'll start out by saying, I don't wanna go through this again. It's been, it's been very taxing for everyone. You as a board who really committed just a ton of time to this, and our partners that are out in the audience right now are adversarial group, our advisory group. I don't know what you call that.
Still are.
And maybe it's, I don't know, maybe it's true. No, our advisory group sat in here and just was a great deal of assistance and, and sat with us through the whole process. I don't think it's incumbent on us to do that again, but that's my opinion, so I, I'd like a little input from the masses here. Our choices at the time were Mark Grossklaus, the second choice was Jeff Sampson, superintendent out of Southland, and the third choice was Gene Duffy, CNI, CNI, from Becker, Minnesota. Gene was the first one that we opted out of. Open it up for discussion.
Well, I think one thing that I was interested in is where we're at in the process with the MSBA. Did that contract or agreement end when we chose Mark? And is it something that, do we go back to the well? Is that a question? Research the, the twenty-five candidates, they gave us six. We know Jeff's a strong candidate, do we look at a couple more? I mean, where do we sit with the MSBA?
I can answer that. What would happen is you would, or they would post and start the process over. They wouldn't do it to the extent of holding the community listening sessions and that type of thing. They'd post probably for a month again, and then you would interview.
Well, I think the reason we chose three candidates was in case something like this did happen. I think we felt good about the, the top three candidates being qualified people that we, we had a hard time narrowing down. And I think that most of us were pretty comfortable with Jeff Sampson, because of his superintendent experience, and some of us did his interview, especially the second. Well, I guess I liked him a lot, I thought he would be a good choice. So I, I guess I, I don't think we have time to go through the whole interview process again, I don't think we'd wanna do that, but that's, I agree, I love it.
So never having gone through this, what are the chances that there's some diamond in the rough that didn't apply the first time, is gonna apply the second time? Or are we gonna have the same pool of candidates to look at if we were to open it up again?
I don't think there's any way of knowing for sure, but there, there are people that might have been in process when ours was posted, because there were other open jobs. It sounds like there's no other movement. The one thing that we were told from the very beginning, or at least I was told, was you don't want to settle. Do we feel like following some American rules, if your winner doesn't fulfill their duties, the crown goes to the sec, the first runner-up? Is that, is that settling? I think that's the question that we need to answer.
I think that both, I think that those final, those two candidates, we, I mean, for me, it was, one had strengths here, one had strengths here, and they, they didn't, they were different strengths for me, for me, they had different strengths. And, but they were pretty even as far as qual, you know, being qualified candidates. And I would've felt comfortable with either one of them coming in and working with our staff and students. So I guess for me, what's, I mean, what's the, if we wanna consider having Jeff, I don't think we should interview others, because I feel like that is not very, I, I feel like that doesn't feel good, that doesn't feel right. So I think, I don't know, and, I mean, I, I'd be more than happy to go back to do it all over again if we had to, but, but I feel like we have a good candidate here. You know, going back and through the, through my notes, and I went back today and read through all my notes with all the different, for both interviews, and there's some really good answers there, and they're, you know, I, I don't know, I just think, my opinion is that we, we take some time to, and I don't know if you can give us more than today, since we just found out today, to have people like relook at their stuff and, and whatever, and think about it, or if you want that decision made right now, what we're going to do. But I feel like it would, he'd be worth a second look.
You know, one of the first things I thought of was just what Hannah said, are we settling for something here? And it would've been a huge drop from one to two, but when we talked for more than forty-five minutes to an hour that night, we started with more people thinking Jeff and ended up with Mark. So it was a, it was a, a big, a big process for us, and we must've thought highly of both of them. And we don't know where Jeff is in the process, he might be interviewing somewhere else. That doesn't mean we have to say, let's choose Jeff tonight, but I think it's incumbent on us to, to see if he's even available for conversation with us, because he could be going, maybe he's interviewing tonight at another job, we don't know. But now you know my feeling on Mr. Sampson, I just thought he was a good person from the get-go, and always my end of things is, for a superintendent, you want somebody, in theory, with the experience to walk through some issues at your district ass. At this point, we don't have many major issues following us, we don't have any referendum looming, or any bond issues, or anything like that, but we do, we would look for a leader with some strengths and some proven strengths. And Mark Wildus with his interview, he was very good at it, he was very conversational. But what do we put on a guy with experience? And I would like to see us commit to someone this evening, just so we can move forward, because if we move into this process more, there'll be that, there'll be less candidates available to us, not more. And the fact that we had a good pool to begin with, and we used the MSBA process to glean us down to six, we were the ones who chose free from there.
Don't. Sorry, don't. Well, I was one of them who walked in, and then I think Jeff was our candidate, and then ended up moving from one side of the aisle to the other. And I still think Jeff would be a really good candidate, I mean, my feelings on that haven't changed. After the interviews and after our discussion, I thought Mark was a better candidate, but that doesn't mean that I think Jeff is not a good candidate. I think if we were to go one step further down the line, that I would be settling. But I, I don't necessarily think that I would consider it settling if we were to gauge Jeff's interest in the position. If he were to say, you know, no, you guys didn't pick me first, so, you know, attack with you guys, or whatever they do, I don't know, superintendent, then I- Then I would say that, then I would feel much more comfortable putting it up again.
I think one of, one of my concerns was during that process, you wanted to ask the audience for their input, and MSBA didn't allow us to do that. So following the meeting, I went back and I asked- So following the meeting, I went back and I asked a lot of questions. And what their feel, what the feeling was from the people that had sat through the interviews, that had been in the other small group interviews and what their feelings were. And they were very strong on Mark and equally as weak on Jeff. And that weighs heavily with me. I, I realize that ultimately the decision comes down to us. But the input from the people that are going to be interacting with him on a day-to-day basis, that is valuable to me. And, and the conversations that I've had, um, have weakened Jeff's position in my view. And I wasn't particularly strong on him to begin with, so.
That's fair. Which is interesting because I've heard, um, that after the, the group, after the advisory group had talked amongst themselves that it was almost split three ways. So I think.
It may just depend on who you talk to.
Well, sure.
Yeah, I've heard both positive on both sides.
Yeah, I have too.
I heard what, I heard what Mike heard is that they were, in their subcommittee, subcommittee meetings, they were, they were split. They liked them both, but they weren't hurt if we'd have named either one.
Well, I think I go back to a comment I made that night in that, you know, we were debating on going between two or three candidates. And going to three made it that much harder and it really did. As we talked, we did come down to two and there was a lot more support for Jeff than, than our third candidate. But had we stepped with two originally, we wouldn't have had Jeff in that pool. So I, he got a second opportunity that I don't think we went into it thinking that we were going to be having. So I'm a little, you know, I'm a little skeptical there. I wouldn't say that Jeff is unqualified because he's doing the job. The big part that I really had an issue with was his ability to communicate and be comfortable. And I think in the community, that's what I was really looking for in that candidate profile. So I, I really am struggling with this whole idea of going to number two, which could have been number three. Or not part of the process. But then you look at the timeline and what we're, we're up against. We were really kind of taking MSBA's model and, you know, the whole idea was to be negotiating the contract and getting it done tonight. And here we sit without a candidate. And so if we go the route of Jeff and he's interviewing, we start the process over anyway. So I'm not sure that that's necessarily the, the answer either.
See that one more time, I didn't quite understand.
So if he's interviewing right now and.
If he's interviewing in another district.
With another district. And we reach out to him, we might be left empty-handed anyway. I just not, I'm not sure that that's necessarily the right path either.
Again, I, I don't think we're settling. I think that Jeff was a very strong candidate for us and, you know, the chips fall a different way. He might have been that choice. We'd have made a vote in the first five minutes of our conversation, Jeff was that choice. But then subsequent conversation, you know, things change. I don't remember, I don't remember Jeff being the number three choice because we didn't feel like he was as strong as the other two or if you were using those number sequence.
Yeah, I think what we really kind of went around the room and we had some consensus around who we thought our top two were. And then, you know, the idea of bringing in Jeff was brought up. And so it just, again, we went to the MSBA and said, well, it just makes it that much harder when you have to decide it too. We weren't opposed to Jeff, really, was what the spirit was.
If my recollection right or wrong, but when we had to list our candidates in order, didn't four of us have Jeff as number one? All of us had, all of us had Jean, yeah, all of us had Jean on our top six. And four of us had Jeff, I think, as our number one guy.
Which night are you referring to?
The night we delivered, well, the night we picked him down to, no, it was the night we decided on Mark. Yeah. And I don't have that with me.
Yeah, so I'm talking the night before when we decided who was the final candidate.
Sure, okay, now I got you.
But, um, I guess going back to the possibility of Jeff being in front of another board or several boards right now, I mean, what kind of guarantee do we have? We don't.
But we won't know until we ask.
Gary Lee contacted me this morning because his, I don't know what's the right term, I think they maybe felt like they failed us, but he said, this is what's going on. Are you aware of that? By then I'd heard Mark. So he offered to make contact for us this evening if we had a candidate that he'd like to shoot for. So he said, I would be glad to make a phone call on availability without commitment. So I don't know if that helps us out or not. But that would be a timeout and a phone call. Negotiations group can sit in with that if they'd like, if they're not ready for that. I'm winded on this, folks, and I don't think we're settling. I, I don't like the term because I think we had two very strong candidates. And, um, I think we need to make a decision as to whether we reach out or not. Maybe that's what we do first, you know, instead of speculating whether or not this guy even has any availability, we should check and see.
But then what? I mean, we see if he's available, then, then what? I mean, I think we need to have a plan either, either way. I don't think we can say, are you interested? Are you still interested? And then are we going to interview him again? Are we going to immediately make the offer? What's our plan forward? We can't just call and say, are you interested? And then we know and then.
So would your answer, would your answer then be to say, let's take Jeff and then see if he's available? Either way, I, I think has merit and again, we're on uncharted territory here.
I don't know, I think we have a responsibility to make sure that we are getting the absolute best possible candidate. And I just don't know that by going with our second choice, we are fulfilling that responsibility.
Well, I think that four of us felt, you know, kind of torn between the two. I felt that either would be a good candidate and it was really, we weren't going to reach consensus because I think you, the two of you had very strong feelings otherwise. And that, that's probably why we decided to go with Mark as the first choice. I didn't feel that he was strongly my first choice. Initially, I thought Jeff was my first choice.
You know, what's interesting is when we reviewed those numbers, those analytical numbers, Jeff came second place, I think, the first time and first place the next night, the final night. But then, I don't like them. I don't like them because they're so, you know, they're not subjective, they're subjective in my view.
Yeah, I don't like the analytical numbers. I feel like all of us have different ways of scoring them. Whether we gave them an exceptional because they answered each part of the question or did we like their answer to the question? Or, you know, how are we scoring those? It's very subjective, so that I don't really like looking at those numbers.
Of course, that's kind of making the argument to do it all over again and just doing it differently.
Well, it was pretty evident that Jeff didn't perform as well the first night, but performed well the second night. I mean, everyone was in agreement that way. And it was the opposite for Jean. And Mark came through both evenings.
Right, but we can't even consider him anymore. So it's not like, I mean.
So the numerical part of it, we can throw out in the end. So, but, um, again, I think with Anna's thought process is, you know, yeah, you make the phone call, but are we, we would have to make the motion that you present it. There's no sense in making the phone call.
I think that's the only way.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I don't think you would ask, you would ask him his availability unless we were prepared to offer him the package. Like, you know.
Intent to negotiate.
Yes, the intent to negotiate, that's the right words.
So, since MSBA is not here, can we hear from anybody that's on?
Can we hear from the advisory group?
You always can, even if MSBA was here, you'd probably.
No, they wouldn't.
In the last.
Yeah. MSBA tried to steer us into doing what they figured would be best for us and that's make our own decision. But you know, I don't, within reason, I don't think it would matter if we had people that had opinions out here.
With or without the camera.
Right, I know.
You can't do that yourself, yeah, it's got to be open.
I mean, is there anybody that would be willing to go on camera? Just saying. This is even like if you had one rep that stood up and said, this is why we thought candidate A was better than candidate B who was definitely better than candidate C?
If you don't say something good about candidate B and he ends up being the guy.
Yeah, it's a little win.
Right.
Well, I think, I think we heard a lot of positive things about the process. And the process brought us here. And we chose the candidate that we thought was the best fit. And now we don't have that person. And do we start over again? I'm kind of leaning that way. It seems like a lot, you know, the community part of it comes, you don't do that part of it. But, you know, we had candidates that were interested that then meet the deadline. We do expose ourselves to the timing. You know, Jeff would be, you know, probably a strong candidate again, but would he, would he apply? I don't know. I don't, I don't really see it as settling, but I think we're trying to do the right thing for the community.
At this point though, we're past March first, so.
This is still considered early.
Are we still okay? Because, you know, there's a lot of people that have already signed on to, to their new.
Remember, there's a lot of superintendents that haven't even signed their new contracts. You know, those people are still, we try to get them done by January one, that's the intent, but just like any other contract. We also try to get the teachers done by June 30th and that gets away from us too.
Sure.
You're not late, if that's something you're worried about, you're, you're okay.
Yeah, in retrospect, it's probably not the best for the audience to participate.
Yes, yes, thank you for saying that.
Future boss.
So this need not be an action item, it can only be a discussion item. I put it on the agenda so we can discuss and I was hoping action. Just because there's been a heavy investment in there.
Someone could change it into an action item.
You're going to have to have a special board meeting if you don't make the action tonight.
Which is okay by me. Could the action be in a table? Of course. Of course. The tables, we just don't take.
So I mean, essentially our options are, we make an offer to Jeff or we go through the process again. But you're saying you wouldn't have to do the community, all those, those other breakup ones?
They will not do the community section again. They will post it and we'll interview. So you could be in the same boat, you could find different candidates, you could, I don't know.
Would we get the same candidates?
I have no idea.
Have we sullied ourselves by not being able to come to an agreement with the original candidate? Again, I said, have we sullied ourselves, our reputation, our ability to attract a good candidates? Knowing that, that we couldn't come to an agreement with this one?
Right, I mean, that is, you think about it.
I mean, Jeff might think the same thing, I don't know.
Well, and Bob, you had said to me this morning that while the reason given was health benefits, you felt like there was something more to it. So maybe it's not that our package isn't attractive, it's just that something else happened for Mark in some other way that wasn't necessarily related to the negotiations. I don't think it makes us look bad. Negotiations fail all the time.
Sure, okay. I don't think I'm ready to make a decision tonight.
Is this an action item?
Not yet.
It is not yet.
I'm a little worried that we're not, I, I found him to be a good candidate for us and I'm a little worried that we're going to end up with not a good candidate in front of us.
See, but what bothers me is good candidate. I want us all to feel like whoever we're bringing in is a great candidate. So all I hear is good, okay, we liked him, he was pretty strong. There's nothing that we've said that makes me feel like this is the person. This is the, the right fit. I just don't, it, it just feels very lukewarm to me and I, I, to me, that's settling. That lukewarm feeling means that we're just, we're going with, eh, good enough. Not, yes, this is the right person. And there's no guarantee that we will have a great outcome if we go through the process again. But in my opinion, if we're not super strong on Jeff, which he was not our number one choice. So that leads me to believe that regardless of when we voted, he was not our number one. And I don't think, I don't personally feel like I can go forward and say, yes, I want to hire him.
But he was some of ours.
I know, but I'm saying, but I'm saying, I, I understand that, but, but it also, it just feels very like we just don't want to go through this process again, so let's go with this guy.
That's, I don't feel it that way.
Because I will go through it. That's the impression I'm getting.
I'm in there, I'm in there, I don't want to go through this again. But that doesn't mean that that lessens Jeff's ability to be our number one choice, if that's there. I think Jeff was a very, very good candidate. And I have stood out there from day one. I don't think he was average, I don't think he was good, I think he was excellent. And he came to the top of the MSBA group or else they wouldn't have named him one of six. And whether or not that we would have thrown him out that first night, we still had two candidates or three candidates, depending on whether we use analytics. And, you know, certainly that second night, he's been consistent with us. He's never been number three as far as the number sequence. And he's never been number three in the second week or else we'd have got rid of him. We did have very positive conversation about both of them. And maybe we were just stroking them because we were in the finals, who knows? But I just feel like he's an excellent candidate. And, you know, the fact that you think he's, we can do better, I respect that. But at the same time, I, I'm one that thinks we went through a, a long period in time and we got two excellent candidates and we all agreed were our two finalists. So I guess that's my read on it. Like, if you're not ready to make any decision and other people are feeling the same way as you, that's fine. But, 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 but. Tell me what your pleasure is. Mike, I'm going to walk around the room here, we're all going to chip in.
My pleasure?
What do you think is in the best interest of us at this point in time?
To me, the best interest, see, that's why, that's what I don't know. I don't know what's in the best interest of the school district. I know what's in the best interest of me is not to have to go through that process again. But does that mean that the district itself is not getting the proper candidate? I don't know. And I would certainly like to look at my notes again, I would certainly like to perhaps go over some applications again if we still have them. I like Jeff. I, I just feel that I owe it to myself before I make the decision to look into it a little bit more than just having to do it in one day.
What do you think, Katie?
I think with this split of a, of a board, I think we need to take some time and let everybody think and just take a little bit of time. It, maybe we meet on, I don't know, this, like later this week or if we call a special board meeting.
Don't we have to call a special board meeting? I don't think it can last for, for, till the next meeting.
No. So I don't know if, if that's the right way to go, if it would just make more sense to, you know.
You want more time.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind more time.
Okay, Brenda?
Well, I have felt I'm more comfortable with Jeff, really. And I think that Mark became the first candidate because there was no, nobody had negative feelings about him. And so he was the least objectionable to everyone. And I think that's, four of us did like Jeff and because the two of you did have objections that we couldn't really agree on that. And those, you're still strong on that, so it would still feel like we're not reaching consensus on him. Even though I'm not sure if we can find anyone better, if we went through the process again. And I guess I was a little frustrated with the whole MSBA thing too because there were candidates that I picked from the pie, that, that all the applicants, that they said were no consensus sign and I don't know why. I mean, and maybe Jeff should have been a no consensus candidate because there was some controversy with him and that became an issue. So it seemed, seemed like that was a bit sheltered and we couldn't really, maybe didn't get to pick the candidates that we might have wanted to interview without the MSBA's screening. And they might know more about it than we do, their history or, you know, what's going on with the applicants, but I wish that could have been, we could have known what that was. More disclosure on that.
I'm smiling because when we had, when we're checking boxes to see where our choices were, two of the six, I had no, don't interview these people.
Yeah.
So, and that was based on my insurance agent looking at an education resume. I just wasn't qualified to do it. So when these names came up, these six, I was going, wow, really? Those aren't people I chose. So I, I just have to lean on MSBA because they know what they're looking for, we had two soups involved, but I would like to make a decision tonight. So now we've heard, delay, delay.
Well, I think we leaned on the MSBA for the process and that was kind of what we signed up for. And so, yeah, you're going to have feelings one way or the other. You know, when it came down to it, I was looking to get some, a little more feedback from the administration about finding two or three candidates. But I think I'd probably move to have more time, call a special board meeting for next week. Give us all a little bit of time to look at our notes. I'm, I'm a little concerned that Jeff would probably not necessarily be comfortable with the conversation that we had.
I think we'll lose Jeff if we don't offer to him because if he's our second choice and we're not going to offer to him now, we open it up again.
Yeah.
He won't be an option, so that's all right.
Also going to watch his video too.
Absolutely.
Anna?
I think Jeff is a great guy, I don't think he's the right guy for us. I would open up the interview process now. And I know, I, I know it's a time commitment, but that's what we all signed up to do. That's what we're here for, is to make sure, this is our most important responsibility is hiring the best superintendent for our school district. And I take that very seriously, so I think we should open it up.
One of the things that encourages me just to have a second, another meeting is the fact that we can't offer it to anyone on a four to two vote or anything like that. We have to have strong consensus, we have to almost have a unanimous decision. I, I think if anybody saw my vote, it was a little delayed last time, but was having a hard time with it. And, but I knew in the end, we had to, we had to have a unanimous vote in order to make that person feel welcome in our district. Otherwise, he walks in thinking, maybe this wasn't working. Or maybe we contact someone and they say, well, we passed you by a four to two vote. No thanks. That's a distinct possibility. So I'll echo your sentiments, we will call a special meeting.
Do you want to try to do that now? Lori, get a date set? You don't pull out your phones and your calendar, that would help Lori out. She will cry if you leave tonight without a date set.
No, I won't. You just won't get to do it.
It's the earliest we can do.
Three days.
I love time Thursday and Friday, so can't be there both days. And you do have to post it three days in advance, so maybe next Monday.
I can do Monday.
Monday, it's good for you.
Sure. Monday?
At six?
At six P M. We're going to have a special meeting. Grab your notes. One thing we always have to, I'll throw this out there because it was thrown at me a while, two or three years ago, that we need to follow the path of research. And if, if we do decide to branch out and go into references and that, it's incumbent on the person that we appoint to do the references. So the independent study probably isn't kosher unless you get online and do something based on history. So don't do any side research on, on folks, just follow the legalities, what MSBA told me that I missed last time. So. Is that the end of the page here? Okay, we will have a special board meeting next eve, next Monday evening at six P M. With the intent of making a decision about what our next process is, I guess, more than anything else.
What's the date?
People first.
Okay. I would look for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Mike, seconded by. Seconded by Katie.
And I are not coming.
Further discussion, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?